Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the Spokane City Council briefing session. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Excellent, and Mr. Ormsby, I'll hand it over to you for the November 8th advanced agenda.
Thank you, Council President and members of the City Council. In the administrative session for next week on the consent agenda under reports, contracts, and claims, the first proposed item is a purchase from Traffic Safety Supply, and Clint Harris from the Streets Department is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council. The Street Department is seeking approval for a value blanket purchase perforated steel tubing from, used for street signs from Traffic Safety Supply at a cost not to exceed $90,000. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. The second item is a proposed value blanket for gate valves, and Lauren Searle from our Water Department is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council. This item is a one-year renewal of the value blanket with Core &amp; Main for the purchase of water system gate valves. Not, this is a one-year extension not to exceed $225,000, and this is our second renewal, and then indicates a twelve, about a 12% increase.
Any questions for Lauren? Thank you, Lauren. Our third item is a proposed value blanket renewal, and Chris Abert from Solid Waste is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon. Today I'm seeking approval for a value blanket renewal with Wemco for the as-needed purchase of mechanical spare parts for the bridge cranes at the Waste Energy Facility. This is a one-year renewal with a cost not to exceed $135,000, including tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next proposal is a contract renewal, and Eric Finch from ITSD is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council. Yes, we're seeking approval here on the renewal of our data platform contract, and it also has an addition added to it, which is a little bit over $100,000 of that amount is to provide direct services to our CHHS group for the homeless management information system.
Any questions for Eric? Great, thank you, Eric. Our next item is a proposed contract renewal for alcohol monitoring systems, which was discussed at a Public Safety meeting about a month or so ago, and Michael Diamond from our Criminal Justice Services Division in Municipal Court is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council. This request agenda is specifically to extend a alcohol monitoring services contract for electronic monitoring on a two-year basis with a cap on that for $264,000, providing approximately 100 electronic monitoring devices per day for the population that we serve.
Any questions for Michael? Thanks, Michael, for being with us this afternoon. Next, we have a proposed contract with the GSI Water Solutions, and Marcia Davis is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon. The contract with GSI was selected for well-field study analysis at the Well Electric Well. This is, they're going to be analyzing, putting new wells in a deeper, deeper location, or in the same location at a deeper, at a deeper depth. This will include analyzing the reduction of impacts to the river. The work is scheduled to begin this year and to end by the end of 2022. Contract total is $631,700.
Any questions for Marcia? Not seeing any. Thank you, Marcia. Next, Megan DeValle is back to present again two additional recommendations for additions to the Spokane Register of Historic Places. Megan.
Thank you, Michael, and hi, Council. Good to see you all. I have a presentation to share, as always, and we'll quickly go through this part. The Spokane Register of Historic Places is, of course, our local program. It is voluntary and requires the consent of the owner for listing. This is how we protect historic properties through the management agreement that you are looking at today. Design review is when a building permit is sought for changes to the exterior, for the most part, and this is how we offer incentives to property owners. On the right screen, so I can advance. There we go. Eligibility is that the age is generally 50 years or older. Actually, one of them today is 48 years, so we'll kind of talk a little bit about that. And then it also has to meet criteria based on our municipal code. We can list building sites, district structures, or objects. Our categories are Category A, broad patterns of Spokane's history. Category B is an association with a significant person to Spokane. Category C is architecture, design, or construction. Category D is our archaeological or prehistory category. And finally, Category E is cultural heritage, where it may not meet other categories of our criteria but for its cultural heritage. So, I have two today, as Mike said. First one is the Knights of Pithias Hall. Built in 1911, the Knights of Pithias Hall at 1203 West Riverside is a good example of a largely intact fraternal hall designed in the commercial Mission Revival architectural style. The building is located on West Riverside Avenue in downtown Spokane. The Knights of Pithias Hall meets Spokane City County Register of Historic Places, Category A, for its association with the social humanitarian theme, specifically with fraternal societies and their impact on late 19th and early 20th century Spokane. The Knights of Pithias Hall represents the expansive fraternal movement in Spokane in the early part of the 20th century. Fraternal societies have experienced a rapid decline in membership since 1960, which has forced many of these organizations to sell their halls, as is the case with the Knights of Pithias, who no longer have a presence in Spokane. One of their neighbors, obviously, the Masonic Temple, also sold fairly recently, although they do still have clubs in Spokane. The Knights of Pithias Hall also meets Spokane City County Register of Historic Places under Category C as a property that embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type and period of construction. The three-story red and brick, oh, red brick building designed by architect Robert C. Swett is distinctive in form and use of material with clinker brick, limestone, and pressed tin. In 2008, a large addition was added to the rear by the current owners, Knack Architecture, and you can see it in this picture. With its wide overhanging eaves, pronounced square brackets, and tile-hipped roof, the mission-style commercial building is somewhat rare in downtown Spokane. The interior of the building is currently being renovated and only have a few distinct character-defining features, such as the old ceremonial auditorium, which you can see here, which they've added a mezzanine level to. Although changes to the windows and entry doors have diminished the exterior integrity of the building, the Knights of Pithias retains the essential physical features that convey its historic identity to be listed on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under Category C, Architecture. The property's period of significance is identified as 1911 to 1961, starting when the hall was constructed and ending when it was sold by the Knights of Pithias in 1961. The Landmarks Commission reviewed the nomination for the Knights of Pithias and recommended it be listed on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under Categories A and C. And then we are moving on. Sorry, dog's licking behind me. River Falls Tower. So this is our little bit newer building. Built in 1972 and occupied in 1973, the architecturally and historically significant River Falls Tower at 1224 West Riverside Avenue is an exceptionally intact 16-story contemporary apartment building designed by Spokane architect Warren Cummins Heilmann. The building is a non-contributing element of the 1976 Riverside National Historic District as a property constructed outside of the period of significance, which makes sense because that nomination ended its period of significance in 1931. This is a little newer than that. The River Falls Tower meets the criteria for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under Category A as a property that is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of the history of Spokane. Its construction evolved during the city's Expo 74 period, loosely defined as between 1967 and 1974. This period was described by one report as the most productive in Spokane since the post-fire rebuilding in 1889. During the implementation of downtown's Abasco master plan created for Spokane in the early 1960s, River Falls Tower, along with four other major apartment buildings, four bank buildings, including two office towers, and retail establishments like River Park Square, J.C. Penney, and Nordstrom, were constructed in the downtown and immediate area surrounding downtown. River Falls Tower and the Cathedral Plaza were the first large-scale apartment buildings constructed in the downtown since the 1952 Cooper George. Before the River Falls Tower was built, the last apartment construction on Riverside took place between 1904 and 1913. Essentially unaltered from its original construction in 1972, '73, the bronze glass cylinder is a clearly articulated building that displays sophistication in design and use of material. River Falls Tower is sleek and contemporary, a product of the design evolution and refinement in Warren Heilmann's journey as a designer. It is his second tower in Spokane. The other Cathedral Plaza, which you see here on the left, is only a block away and was constructed in 1970. Another tower, this time in Olympia, which you see on the right, the 1972 Capitol Lake Tower, was his second high-rise apartment building and articulates the design and material characteristics that culminate in River Falls Tower, a residential masterwork. Stylistically, the form and use of materials for the River Falls Tower is rare in Washington State and the only one of its type in Spokane. The construction method of the tower was also relatively rare in Spokane. The lift slab technique of pouring all the floors one on top of the other and then lifting them into place floor by floor, and you can see that in the left-hand picture here, this is a story from the Spokesman Review, and they literally poured those floors on top of each other, and they stuck together at first, and they had to use a special sort of chemical to get them to release before they could start pulling them up and securing them in place. And that's what you can still see on the tower, is that those floor slabs with the balconies of glass. Additionally, it is the work of master architect Warren Cummins Heilmann, who was awarded six American Institute of Architecture awards over the course of his career, a Concrete Institute Award for the parcade, and was inducted in the American Institute of Architects College of Fellows in 1983. As such, it is eligible to be listed on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under Category C, Architecture, as exceptionally significant. For listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places, a building generally needs to be more than 50 years old or determined to be exceptionally significant in an architectural, historical, or cultural manner, and then it may be designated as historic if it has significant character, interest, or value as part of the development, heritage, or cultural characteristics of the city. In the case of River Falls Tower, the building is within two years of reaching its 50-year mark and is one-of-a-kind in Spokane in terms of its material and design. It was designed by one of Spokane's most noted and recognizable mid-century architects, Heilmann, and would be the first of its designs to be listed on the Spokane Register. It is also associated with the Expo period of construction and transformation of downtown Spokane between 1967 and 1974, which transformed downtown from a railroad corridor to a thriving Central Park and commercial center. The Landmarks Commission reviewed River Falls Tower's nomination on October 20th and recommends that it is eligible for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places as exceptionally significant under Categories A and C. And that concludes my report. Stop sharing.
Any questions for Megan? Thank you, Megan, for being with us. Next, we go to a series of proposed contracts and contract renewals and amendments, and Chris Abert from Solid Waste is still with us, and he'll be presenting the next five items.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda is a one-year renewal with online cleaning services for boiler-blast cleaning to remove slag buildup inside the boilers at the Waste Energy Facility. This is a one-year contract with a value not to exceed $300,000, including tax. Item 9A is a one-year renewal with bay valve service for as-needed valve repair at the Waste Energy Facility. The value of this renewal is $325,000, including tax. Item 9B is a one-year renewal with valve fabrication for as-needed grapple repairs for the bridge cranes at the Waste Energy Facility. The cost for this extension is not to exceed $85,000. Item 10A is a one-year renewal with Wemco for crane hoist, trolley, and lifeline preventative maintenance inspections for auxiliary cranes at the Waste Energy Facility. This extension is not to exceed $60,000. Item 10B is a one-year renewal with Wemco for bridge crane maintenance and preventive maintenance inspections. The extension is not to exceed $100,000. And finally, the last item is a one-year contract with Knight Construction for as-needed mechanical repairs at the Waste Energy Facility. This contract is not to exceed $2,200,000. Any questions on any of those items? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Finally, we go to the two placeholder items that we have on every agenda. The first is the report of the mayor with claims and payments, and 12B is payroll claims. And item 13 is a placeholder for council approval of city council meeting minutes, and those dates will be filled in prior to the meeting next week. Then we move to the evening legislative session for next week. On the legislative agenda, under special budget ordinances, the first one relates to management information services, and Eric Finch from ITSD remains with us, and he's here to brief the first special budget ordinance.
So, thank you, and so this is in a direct relation to the one contract that I briefed earlier, and it's basically leveraging the salary savings piece that ITSD has available as a fund source to help us cover this, cover this amount. This is for kind of two factors, really. You know, one is the fact that in our data management team, we've had basically a vacancy for well over a year that's just because of market conditions, been very hard to fill, and we've gone through honestly two unsuccessful recruitments, and so we've had to contract that work in the meantime. The other is for the CHHS-oriented effort, where that's additional, and again, that team is down, you know, one vacancy currently, you know, in the CMIS group. So it's leveraging, you know, savings from, you know, ITSD to help pay for those needed services in that contract. Any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Next, we go to resolutions and final reading ordinances. The first resolution deals with the permitting of use of security cameras in city departments, primarily at the North Foothill Site, and Lauren Searle is still with us, and he will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council. This item is a request to use a security camera system at the Foothills Complex. In the last year and a half, as we've reduced our footprint and had to move more of our materials, vehicle storage, and equipment outdoors, the, we've experienced a greater sense of loss, and we're looking to put a, we had a security system evaluated with, with a number of cameras around the outdoors area of the complex in order to increase the security at our facility.
Any questions for Lauren about this request? I've not seen any, Lauren. Thank you for staying with us and briefing this item. Next, we have a resolution recognizing the Ray Freya Analysis Report, and Inga Note from Planning is here to brief this item.
All right, good afternoon. So I just want to show you where we were at on the schedule for this project. The last time I came before, Council, was a couple months ago, but since then, we have posted the final report on the project page and presented to Planning Commission and to the PCTS. And at the request, let's see, here's the, the final report is on the webpage right here, and then at the request of Councilwoman Kinnear, drafted up a resolution basically recognizing the key recommendations from this report, and so I will just very quickly go through the slides that show you what those are. The recommended project for, in place of the Ray Freya crossover is to install a roundabout at the intersection of 37th and Ray Street and a signal at 37th and Freya. If for some reason that one does not move forward, maybe there's, you know, in a few years, people have changed their mind that they don't want a roundabout at the entrance to the high school, then the alternate project to that would be to do a curve with a signal in the same location. So that is listed out here. We also had a recommendation in the report to make some key local street connections, which are shown in red on the map, and also are defined in the ordinance, or the resolution, excuse me. And then some recommendations for bicycle and pedestrian improvements, 35th and Ray Street pathway, the crossover pathway, and then the pathway connection through the Hazel's Creek property. So that's it. Any questions?
I have a question. Hi, Inga. So I just know sometimes with roundabouts, it's an education process for the neighborhood, understanding how much safer it can be by moving the pedestrian access to the, sort of the narrowest parts, you know, not right at the conflict areas. Will there be an opportunity to do that? Because I kind of heard you say, well, if the decision is they don't want it, it's like, well, sometimes that information really, it's a big education piece, but it's an important one, especially by a school.
Yeah, that would definitely have to be a part of the project, and I, and I really hope that one moves forward. I just, you know, sometimes it's nice to have an alternative if something changes, but we, I think the primary concern with the school district was making sure that the pedestrians crossing at that location are safe, and we've looked at some ways to maybe, you know, help emphasize the crosswalk design in that roundabout to make it safer and make the students feel more comfortable. And so, yeah, educating them, the student drivers, that would be a huge part of it.
And then also, did you look at a potential for mid-block instead of shoving it all in one area?
For mid-block crossings?
Yeah.
There, we show on the drawing that there might be one at Thor Street, which is halfway in between, but in order to keep the pathway concept that continues up Ray Street to tie into the Lincoln Heights Shopping Center, that one needs to go through the roundabout somehow.
Okay, thank you.
I can't see the screen, so does anyone else besides Councilwoman Mum have a question? Bring it.
Okay. Thank you.
Not hearing any, thank you, Inga. Next, there's a proposed resolution establishing a process to discuss next uses for the library space at the MLK Center, and Councilwoman Wilkerson is presenting this.
Thank you. So we know lots is happening in East Central. The new library is scheduled for its ribbon-cutting ceremony on November 12th. That does leave a vacant space that is owned by the city. That neighborhood is going through a renewal, and with all this happening, we would really like to make sure that citizens have input, whether we should lease it, sell it, however we activate it, that the community engagement does take place.
Any questions or comments on the resolution? Okay, great. Thanks, you, thank you, Councilwoman. Next, we have the updating of the annual property tax levy for the year 2022, and Paul and Josie, our budget officer, is here to present this item, which also relates to H1, which is a public hearing item that would occur later in the meeting. So, Paul.
Thank you, Mike, and good afternoon, Council President and City Council members. As Mike so aptly described, this is the annual property tax levy ordinance update for 2022. This would increase property tax rates by the 1% allowed under state law for the upcoming tax year. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, I don't see any. Thank you, Paul. Next, we have a, which was, which was briefed a couple weeks ago, a proposed one relating to the Sears program, and Phil Pensick, our retirement director, is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council. Apologize in advance for any background noise. I'm currently sitting in an airport, so I apologize if you hear anything. This ordinance will update code so that it clarifies the definition of a couple, or a marriage to include same-sex couples. It also clarifies to avoid conflict with RCWs regarding probate law for designating and selecting beneficiaries. As Mr. Ormsby mentioned, have briefed this in the past, but I'm here for any questions if you have some.
Okay, not seeing any. Thanks, Phil, and happy travels.
Thanks.
Next, we have a proposed ordinance relating to various revenue and internal services funds, and Michelle Murray, our Director of Accounting Services, is here to brief this item.
Well, surprise City Council, it's Tanya Wallace filling in for Michelle today.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that quick change there. Yes, what you have in front of you is a request for a new fund, the Real Estate Excise Tax REIT I, so to create a new fund, as well as to eliminate two funds that we're no longer using for under freeway parking and transportation, and then the intermodal facility, we're no longer going to use those funds. And then we also want to, for clarity, change the name of a fund from asset management to facility management, just to better represent exactly what that fund is used for. Any questions, Council? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Now we go to the two hearings. The first was, it relates to the city's CIP program, and the second relates to beginning the hearing on the proposed 2022 budget, and Paul and Josie is still with us.
Mike, Mike, we have one first reading ordinance, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Councilwoman Kinnear, I'm sorry, I skipped over that, trying to get, getting ahead of myself, sorry. So first reading ordinance, Councilwoman Kinnear has a proposed ordinance reducing fees for construction of certain dwelling units, and Councilwoman is going to present this ordinance. this ordinance.
I will. And I talked about it, I think, last week. So this is essentially incenting ADUs in certain areas adjacent to or close to within a half a mile of centers and corridors. And Jacoby met with Nate Glenn to really hone in on where exactly the borders would be. So we're going to be using not just centers and corridors, but identifying zones. So if somebody comes into Development Services, it'll be obvious where it should be, they don't have to guess. And we would estimate that about $5,000 per unit could be saved. So this is not intended for large developers. This is intended for homeowners that want to add a rental space to their -- or something for their mother-in-law to their house. So that's it in a nutshell, and we'll probably be making some small changes to this to clarify where the zoning exactly will be.
Sorry, Councilwoman, for skipping over your item. Now we'll move to the hearings or proposed hearings for next week or that begin next week, and Paul and Josie is here to outline those.
Thank you again, and good afternoon again. The first hearing on the agenda is for the six-year capital improvement program for the years 2022 through 2027. That program has already been through the Plan Commission process and is now going to be in front of City Council next Monday night. The second hearing is the kickoff of the 2022 proposed budget hearings, and they will run consecutively on Monday evenings through, I believe, December 6th is the last night possible for the hearings. Happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Councilman Cathcart. Yeah, thank you. So I don't know if it was last week or the week prior, but we had a constituent who had shared just some concerns from their perception of how this matches up with some requirements under GMA. And I'm wondering if you guys have had a chance to take a look at that and verify whether or not those concerns were valid, and I'm wondering if you could address that.
I believe we have looked into it, Councilmember Cathcart. If you'd like, we could, I can probably put it better in writing, if I could send you a written response. We believe we're in compliance, but I'll send it in a written response.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Mumm.
Yeah, if you could just send that to all of us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Paul, I have a question for you on the capital improvement plan. Usually, it's in there right now for some fire and police vehicles to be funded, American Recovery Plan Act. Usually, we have funded that with general funds from the 1% increase or loan, SIP loans. And someone put this in as ARP, even though Council hasn't decided how to fund that yet. So my first question is, did you put other ARP capital in there, or are those the only two that are designated for ARP?
Council President, I believe there's two other projects in the IT section that, when the program was being developed, were identified as potential ARP-funded projects. I don't have them off the top of my head, I'm looking over. There's a public safety CAD program, I believe, and an additional records management in the IT that's also related to public safety, I believe.
Okay. And then my next question was, I didn't see any detail, I saw detail on the fire vehicles, but I didn't see detail on the police vehicles, and I'm wondering if we have that anywhere.
I believe we may have sent that to you in response to your email question.
All right.
I believe it's a mixture of pursuit vehicles, looking at, I think, the hybrid K8s, some motorcycle replacement, hostage negotiation unit, replacement vehicle, as well as some other miscellaneous items in there.
Okay. Great. And then if we wanted to amend the funding piece before we adopt the plan, do you want us to just put that language in the ordinance? Or what's the best, what's most effective for you?
That is a good question. I might need to send you an email on that one, too. I'm not entirely sure. Because I think in the past, the ordinance was amended, but I just want to make sure it's.
Okay. That'd be great if you'd send that. Thanks.
Councilwoman Kinnear, I see, has her hand up as well.
Okay, my ears just perked up when he said replacing motorcycles for police. Typically, they're used for traffic. Our traffic unit is not being staffed right now, so why would we be replacing motorcycles?
I would have to defer to SPD on a response for that one. That's just part of the plan that they had submitted for the replacement vehicles.
So I guess my point is, I think we want to look at all of that carefully. That's the only one that made my ears perk up. There might be some other ones in there that we need to look at and say, wait a minute, do we really need this? Let's be a little more prudent than just giving carte blanche to these. Thanks.
Any other questions about either of the proposed hearings for Paul?
Quickly, Mike, just to piggyback Councilmember Kinnear, especially again, if those requests are being made out of ARP funding, that will be extremely challenging as we go forward.
Council President.
I'm just wondering if it would be helpful to Paul if we talked about maybe requesting an alternative funding for those items now, so he'd have a little more time? Because if we take the ARP funding away, we may need to find the funding for those important items in another place. It would be great if we could have some help from administration in identifying that.
And just, I gave that written comment to the administration last week, requested that they provide that for us, so.
Would you prefer a motion?
Sure.
Okay. I'll move to request staff provide an alternative revenue source besides ARP funding in the CIP.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? All right. The motion passed requesting administrative staff to provide alternative funding for the ARP-funded measures in the CIP. Thanks.
Council President, and Councilmembers, that includes the proposed draft agenda for next week's meeting.
Is there a motion to adopt the advanced agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? All right, the advanced agenda for November 8th is adopted. And that brings us to this evening's agenda. And I believe Councilmember Mumm, you might have had a motion on Resolution 91 regarding retirement plan contribution levels.
Yes, I'd like to move to defer Resolution 91 until November 29th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any, you want to explain that just a little bit, and then any discussion?
Yeah, I'm working with our council staff, who's also having discussions with the administration about alternatives that would be revenue or budget neutral for 2021 to help replenish the contributions that would have been made by staff had we not had the mayor's hiring freeze and our labor shortage.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of deferring Resolution 91 until November 29th, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred. Any other agenda items for tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none. Ms. Pfister, if you could read the consent agenda for tonight.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchases of used roll-off truck for the waste energy facility when one is found. The price of this truck will range from $110,000 to $150,000 plus tax and shipping. And B, two diesel hydro excavators from SWS Equipment Incorporated Spokane Valley using Sourcewell contracts, number 122017-SCA and number 060920-KTC for the wastewater management department, $995,289, including tax. Number two, acceptance of a Treasury Rent Assistance Program 2.0, TRAP 2.0, funds from the Washington State Department of Commerce and authorization to sub-grant funds to providers that help prevent eligible households facing eviction from experiencing homelessness. $10,540,000, excuse me, $10,540,405, relates to special budget ordinance C36125. B, Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Program II, ERA II funds from the U.S. Department of Treasury and authorization to sub-grant funds to providers that help prevent eligible households facing eviction from experiencing homelessness. $5,297,865 relates to special budget ordinance C36126. Number three, administrative reserve increase to the contract with La Riviera Incorporated, Rathrum, Idaho. For the Clark Avenue landslide stabilization and remediation work, $300,000 relates to item consent agenda item numbers 4A and 4B. Number four, reimbursement agreements, deeds of trust, and promissory notes between the city of Spokane and A Riverside Elms condominium association to reimburse the city for landslide mitigation at 1828 West Riverside Avenue related to the Clark Avenue landslide, $220,000. And B, James &amp; Sue Elmer to reimburse the city for landslide mitigation at 1905 and 1909 West Clark Avenue related to the Clark Avenue landslide, $80,000. Item number five, report of the mayor of pending A, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through October 22nd, 2021. Total $11,517,2037 with Parks and Library claims approved with their respective boards, warranters, including Parks and Library total $10,464,839.40. Number six, city council meeting minutes for October 18, October 21, and October 28, 2021.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda is approved. Before I gavel us out, I wanted to hear from Kirsten Davis about the rent, rental assistance. We have two special budget ordinances making accommodation for the just over $15 million in rental assistance we agreed to accept. And I just thought she could give a little report at briefing instead of having to come back at 6:00, so. Kirsten, why don't you tell us what the latest is on this $15 million plus of new rental assistance?
Sure, no problem. Thanks for having me. So we have two rounds coming in. Again, we've, so we've done ERA I, and we've done TRAP I, and now we're moving to ERA II and TRAP II. So if you remember, the ERA I was, that process went through a council, an RFP council committee that selected those organizations to do that. And then the TRAP I funding went through the CHHS Board RFP Committee. And they basically chose similar organizations to distribute those funds as well. We are in the process of putting together an update, a recap of how those funds have been distributed. We have all of the information for ERAP I, which are the funds that the council RFP committee look, you know, made recommendations about. And then, and there's all sorts of demographic information, so we'll be working with you to give you that recap. The TRAP funds, and then we'll be giving the same recap to both you and the CHHS RFP committee, and they will be making recommendations as to, you know, based on the information that we get. And we would expect or hope that this group could do the same for the ERA funds. They are definitely significantly getting distributed much quicker now, now that the system has been set up. There are some wonderful organizations that are working under our Live Stories subcontractor to get those funds out. So we'll have more kind of that presentation ready to go this week, and would like to share that with you as we move forward. And also, just to kind of give you an idea of what it would look like to continue to use the vendors that we're partnering with, and also if we were to go through a new RFP process. Any questions?
And when are you coming back to us on that issue?
Well, we were going to have that recap for you this week.
This week, okay.
And then, yeah, yeah, it should be in the next couple days.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks. Councilmember Wilkerson?
Uh-huh.
You're on mute.
If we do another RFP, my concern is timeline of putting it out there, getting it back, getting it evaluated, how much more would that add to the dispersment of funding?
That is going to be one of the disadvantages of going through a new RFP process. There aren't a lot of folks out there that, you know, are set up to do this work. And, but we want everyone to have the opportunity to, you know, look at the recap and see how it's been going. Just as another reminder, you know, the city of Spokane is averaging a 45-day turnaround. The state average is 72 days. This is just one of those processes that does take time, and I think from the time we hear that the money's coming, which is in meetings like this, to the time it actually hits applicants, you know, accounts or landlord accounts, it feels like a lot longer than that, and I can appreciate that.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, do you know what the turnaround time is in the county with SNAP?
I don't have that information. I can definitely ask that question, yeah.
In conversations with some of the landlords, they have said that their experience with SNAP has been really easy and really quick. And so whatever they're doing seems to be working pretty well.
I will follow up on that.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Ormsby.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to let the council know that we do expect to have the proposed contract between the city and county with the Salvation Army mid this week, and at that point, we'll refile it and on-base hopefully for consideration at next week's meeting. And that's acceptable with all the parties, because the contract isn't finalized yet, and it didn't seem appropriate to bring a contract to you for approval when it wasn't final. But we hope to get that later this week, and just wanted you to know that was our plan.
All right. Thanks for that. Thanks, Kirsten. All right, that brings us to the end of our briefing session. We'll see people back at 6:00 PM. We are adjourned.